Shavim, a member supporter of KJazz eighty-eight four one doing our member, our web only, membership drive. Take a moment out and the music touches you and that's what music is all about. It just makes you feel good on a bad day. It's like sunshine coming through your veins, through your ears, your heart, your soul. It just gets right in there. And that's why we're so proud of being a public radio station supported by you. You make a difference. Public radio is you. And this is our web only. And we're going to interrupt the music from here to the air just to remind you what it's all about. Just a reminder, okay? But it is a good thing for you to be a listener, a listener who is motivated even more to become a member of the family, right on our website, jazzandblues.org. Hey, while you're up there becoming a member, check out the gift gallery and you can find out so many ways of how we want to say, or actually it's you saying to yourself, how good you are keeping jazz alive on eighty-eight point one. All the music doing jazz is six hits available on the website. I know, I just put it there. So get ready for it. Up next, John Coltrane on KJazz eighty-eight point one.
I call the regular city council meeting from Wendy, October fourteenth, two thousand thirteen to order. Councilman Shanks, would you please lead us in the presidential allegiance?
Would you rise, place your hand over your heart, face the flag and repeat after me? I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic of the United States, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
The city clerk, would you please call the room?
Mayor Miller?
Here.
Mayor Potem Deaton?
Here.
Councilman Levitt?
Councilman Shanks?
Councilman Sloan?
Here.
Councilman Levitt has an excuse's absence. Approval of agenda and waiver of full reading of resolutions and ordinance. By motion of the city council, this is a time to notify the public of any changes to the agenda and or rearrange the order of the agenda. The city manager, are there any changes?
Yes, mayor, the only item tonight is agenda item E on the consent calendar. There's a minor revision on the attachment, which is the letter to OCTA, just in the last sentence of the first paragraph. That's it.
Okay, thank you. Mr. City Attorney, do you have any changes?
No changes.
Do any council members wish to make any changes to the agenda? Okay, is there a motion to approve the agenda as presented?
So moved.
Please vote. That passes four zero. Presentations and recognitions. Gina Phillips will give us the presentation regarding the grand jury.
Good evening. Thank you for letting me be here. I'm here because November is grand jury awareness month. Who knew? I am currently serving on the two thousand thirteen, two thousand fourteen grand jury, and I am on the promotion and orientation committee. So it is this committee amongst the grand jury that goes around and kind of gets the word out. We're recruiting people for the two thousand thirteen, two thousand fourteen grand jury. And if you don't mind, I'd just like to read this because I forget everything. So then, the grand jury is recruiting for the period beginning July first, two thousand fourteen through June thirtieth, two thousand fifteen. Applications will be accepted beginning October first through January twenty-fourth. The Orange County Grand Jury has civil oversight over local government, and the only way that it works efficiently is when we include all of our communities with their individual and diverse backgrounds. As a panel, we investigate and write reports to improve the quality of lives in Orange County. Each panel member has the opportunity to contribute ideas of interest in selecting the government affairs it chooses to investigate. Some people may want to add their knowledge and expertise regarding issues within their community that could affect the rest of Orange County. In addition, a significant amount of time is spent supporting the district attorney with criminal indictment hearings. The commitment is twelve months and begins the first of July. We meet five days a week. However, our schedules are decided by the entire panel. For this, we receive a stipend of fifty dollars a day, free parking, and mileage reimbursement. But more importantly, it's an incredible civics lesson. The requirements are that you're a citizen of the United States, eighteen years of older, and a resident of the state and/or county for one year prior to being selected, in possession of your natural faculties, ordinary intelligence, sound judgment, fair character, and beyond the legal requirements, there are more specific qualifications which are desirable for a grand juror. A general knowledge of the functions, authorities, and responsibility of the county and city governments and other civil entities. Research abilities, including complex reading capabilities, background in assessing, analyzing facts, and report writing. Good to excellent health. Respect and objectivity concerning the positions and views of others, and computer literacy is always a plus. I have some flyers that, or you can go to the website, www.ocgrandjury.org, or you can contact seven one four eight three four six seven four seven for additional recruitment information. And I got to say, it is an incredible experience. We're only into, what, three months of it so far, and I have learned more about this county than I ever dreamed. So if anybody is interested in doing this, I highly recommend it. It's a lot of fun. You meet some great people, and you learn so much. Thank you.
Thank you, Gina. Okay, tonight we have a proclamation for Chief Hazel Mel McCown. She's not able to be with us tonight, but she's served in the United States Army for twenty years and continue to serve in the California State Military Reserve. And Chief McCown is a Seal Beach resident for over sixty years, and she is a member of the First United Methodist Church in Seal Beach. On behalf of the city and the city council, we are hereby recognizing Chief McCown with a proclamation for her dedicated service to the city and to the country. Thank you. Okay, so all communications. At this time, members of the public may address the city council on any items within the subject matter jurisdiction of the council pursuant to the Brown Act. The council cannot discuss or take action on any items not on the agenda unless authorized by law. Matters not on the agenda may, at the council's discretion, be referred to staff and placed on a future agenda. Those members of the public wishing to speak are asked to come forward to the microphone, state your name for the record. All speakers will be limited to five minutes. Any documents for review should be presented to the city clerk. Anyone who wishes to address the council, please come to the podium.
Good evening, Mr. Mayor, council members, and members of the public. My name is Allen Monsour, representing the seventy-fourth Assembly District. I just came by this evening to say hello and wanted to let everyone know that I'm going to be hosting a public forum, a town hall meeting on the Affordable Care Act this Wednesday, six thirty P M, Huntington Beach City Hall. Everyone is welcome to attend. It's not a debate on the pros and cons of it. It's more of an explanation of it. A lot of people have many questions, and we're doing it in conjunction with National Federation of Independent Businesses and the Huntington Beach Chamber of Commerce. So once again, everyone is welcome. It's this Wednesday, six thirty P M, Huntington Beach City Hall. And if I can ever be of service to anyone, my door is always open to each and every one of you. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Good evening, council staff, members of the public. It's a pleasure to be before you, Seth Eaker. Yes, I'm wearing the fortieth Ruby anniversary Run Seal Beach shirt because it's never too early to start planning for next year's run.
Go ahead.
See? Coming up, April fifth, I think. That's what it says on the back of my shirt, right?
April fifth.
Yeah, come run with us. So I just wanted to let everybody know, it's time to start planning for Run Seal Beach in two thousand fourteen. It's going to be a great race, and it's our Ruby forty year anniversary. That's awesome. I did want to address a couple of issues with the council. Just specifically, I'll start with my chamber comments pertaining to consent calendar item E. The chamber wishes to again affirm our position, which is in opposition to toll lanes. I'm planning, as a result of some interaction with staff and members of council, on attending the Westminster hall meeting, Westminster Town Hall meeting about this very issue tomorrow, right before I leave. So it's a priority for the chamber. It's a priority for our business community, and I'm very confused and concerned that other organizations seem to be speaking on behalf of the business community in Seal Beach. And last time I checked, the chamber is the organization that's really speaking for the business community. And there are some other business organizations in Orange County that seem to be leading the public, and particularly our community, a little bit astray about what the business community wants. And I'm reaffirming that the business community does not want toll lanes, and we support the mayor's letter. Next item is me speaking as a resident, and I was actually empowered by another resident who couldn't be here tonight due to a personal prior engagement, and that's our consent calendar item D. And I think staff has a photograph for me here. Right. So I'm about two hundred and twenty-five pounds, and I'm comfortably conbench over three hundred and fifteen pounds. So generally, I feel I'm a fairly strong fit person. That's a pig. And that's a person kind of standing near that pig over there, and that's a car. And I'd estimate that pig size, not that I'm an expert in animal husbandry, but well over a hundred and twenty pounds. Regardless of size, I also happen to have a family farm in Missyin, and this is not a farm. This is in our town. And I would support that the idea of prohibited animals is probably appropriate for our town. Because that's not a pet. That's animal husbandry. That's a farm animal. It's a big animal. And I think we should take a pretty hard look at saying, that's not humane to be enclosed in a tiny space. It's not appropriate for neighbors. It's not appropriate for our seaside community. So that's item D. Continuing on this theme of animals in our community, this is not on the consent calendar, but I'd really like to, and I brought it up with Mayor Potem Deaton and Councilman Shanks at the last coffee, just wanted to reiterate that we seem to have this issue about animals on the beach, particularly dogs on the beach. And it's pretty clearly posted that we're not supposed to have dogs on the beach. And I continue to receive photographs from residents and concerned citizens, and I know that I've shared them with Councilman Deaton and several members of staff, that we still have lots of dogs on the beach, both on leash, off leash. I love the kite festival. It was gorgeous. And I took pictures-
Have one minute.
Thank you. Of at least six dogs on the beach. So it's not that I love dogs. I love dogs. I want us to be able to have a consistent enforcement of a code. So maybe we should have a section of beach that allows dogs. Maybe we don't. I don't know. But if we're going to have a code, let's enforce the code. And maybe simplifying some signs and making a better concerted effort to communicate what that is would be helpful. Last thing I was going to say, please remember the community Thanksgiving dinner is coming up on the twenty-eighth. The chamber's producing it at Saint Anne's Church. We welcome any and all community members at no cost, particularly those most in need. Thank you so much.
Is there anyone else who wishes to speak?
Good evening, City Council, Joyce Parquet, Old Town Seal Beach. And there's some things that I was talking about the last meeting, but I want to bring them up. But in the meantime, I met the mayor on the pier, was it Thursday or Friday, when you were doing your-
Thursday.
Thursday. So he's going to be talking about the state of affairs of the city of Seal Beach coming up on Seal Beach Three Channel in late November, correct? So that's going to be fascinating, the state of affairs of the city of Seal Beach. But in the meantime, we were talking about things and dogs. Well, Gordon, the bike trail is still running over with bikers that don't care about how fast they're going. They're going. They're speeding. They're going to hurt somebody. Gordon, they're going to hurt somebody. Or is that your area, Councilwoman Deaton? It used to be over there. Now it's over here, I think. It's your area?
No, it's a number of areas because it goes from Old Town through my area into Mr. Sloan's area. So it covers a lot of areas.
Well, it's not just me. It's also the people that come. The people that come into town that are down there, some of them are surfboarders, or some of them are going windsurfing. But they don't even care about them either. I mean, you know, they're just speeding. So it's your job to make him do it, right? Five miles an hour? Isn't that what you told us a couple of weeks ago? She runs the city, the city manager, and you're just here to make sure that they do what they're supposed to do. Forget the taxpayers. I don't know who's supposed to help us. But in the meantime, we did have a very good kite festival, and it was a family-friendly kite festival. It was very nice. Were a lot of people here. And the one guy came from Brooklyn to sell his some kind of hamburger. It's not a hamburger, but it's some other kind of hamburger. But I mean, he sold out. It was very good. I enjoyed it. But when we get those people in town, they don't know where to park, and they go crazy on Ocean Avenue. They speed up and down. And maybe next time, we'll have to help them park someplace. Where are we going to help people park? We've got this parking problem with Main Street where we want to charge everybody annual fees, which is, wasn't even a program set up for them from the previous, from our attorney until, what, was it a couple of years ago? But there is a lot of, I was talking about the previous city managers, and some of the people they hired who were their friends, who weren't qualified to be here. And I just wanted to go back to Bohorski, who was here. He hired a treasurer who was not qualified, who stole money from us. And we didn't know that until we got caught. Wasn't qualified to be here. And then we got another lady who, when she got her CPA at the taxpayers' expense, left, if you remember that lady. And then we had the other lady that came in, that took her place for a while before we got-
You have one minute.
Always have one minute, right? So I was just wanting the taxpayers to know that it's a revolving door. Friends come in, friends go out of the city manager. You slap my back, and I'll slap your back, and we'll get along just fine until we leave. Thank you.
Is there anyone else who wishes to address the council?
Good afternoon. Good evening, folks. My name is Rocko Mann, and as we all know, we're having a coyote problem. There's two or three attacks a week. I mean, they did it all in the park. They killed cats. They killed dogs. I have no idea what to do, and I'm here asking you guys, what do we do? How do we protect our dogs and cats, our pets? I don't know what to do about it. But I think something should be done. I don't know what. But, you know, you see a sign that says Bill's dog was eaten? Eh, it's a sign. But with Bill, it's not a sign. You know, I mean, we love our dogs, and the last thing we want to see is them being killed. How to stop them? I have no idea, sir. I'm here to ask them for help. How do we do this?
We have a public meeting next Monday in this council chambers, seven o'clock. I'll announce it again under my oral communication. But be here, be part of the solution, and we'll be discussing it. Long Beach Animal Control will be here. So will the California State game and wild, no, what is it? Fish and Wildlife. They will be here. So that's what the forum is for, is to discuss this problem. So I hope we'll see you then.
Well, me is out. Definitely be here. Me, you know, I'm not speaking for me. I'm speaking for all of them.
No, I understand. So that's why we're going to do this.
Okay, thank you.
Uh huh.
Is there anyone else who wishes to address the council? Seeing they want to declare oral communications is now closed. Mr. City Attorney, do you have a report? No report tonight. The city manager, do you have a report?
Nothing tonight, thank you.
Council? Yes, there's been some confusion about having exercise stations on the P E right away. I got a call today from the chairman of the Parks and Rec Commission from Hawaii, as it happens. And they have not made any recommendation at all on the location, or the size, or what to have for stations along, well, anywhere, let alone the P E right away. So again, there's nothing to get excited about. At some stage, this will come before the Parks and Rec Commission, and then it will come before the city council, before any decision is made to change the ambiance or the, what we have on the P E right away. Because a number of us who have been here a long time went through a lot of trouble to create the P E right away, and we have a really, a very strong attitude about it. So it is being watched. So anyway, that's all I have.
I just want to reiterate about the coyote meeting. Our Seal Beach Police Department, Long Beach Animal Control, California Fish and Wildlife, and hopefully the Navy will all be here that night to help us with ideas on how to handle this problem. Education is key. Do not let your cats and your dogs outside. My neighbor just lost his sixteen-year cat that he had to take and bury yesterday, and you just can't let them out right now. We need to figure out what to do. And the first stage is educating, and then we'll have this meeting November fourth to talk about what some solutions are. I know one of the solutions is definitely to get aggressive. Don't turn your back on them. Don't walk away from them. Face them down and let them know that you're in charge. So come November fourth, seven o'clock, right here in the council chambers, and we'll explore more alternatives. Thank you.
As mentioned earlier, tomorrow night, we're going to have a four oh five toll lane town hall meeting regarding toll lanes on the four oh five freeway. The corridor of cities are putting this on. The corridor of cities consists of Costa Mesa, Fountain Valley, Huntington Beach, Westminster, Seal Beach, and Los Alamos. We'll each have a representative on a panel. We'll be joined there by Supervisor Morlock, by Assemblyman Allen Monsour, by Assemblyman Travis Allen. And we will discuss toll lanes, including such things as congestion at the county line, air quality impacts, and impacts on our local streets, among other things. And the Orange County Transportation Board will actually again look at toll lanes at the board meeting on November eighth. And so anybody who'd like to come to that meeting and speak, they'd be welcome to come and speak their opinion of the toll lanes. And with that, we will move on to the next item. There are no council items tonight. The consent calendar, items on the consent calendar are considered to be routine and are enacted by a single motion with the exceptions of the items previously pulled by the council, which none were. So is there a motion to approve the consent calendar as presented?
So moved.
Second.
Please vote.
Before I vote, I'm going to read the title of ordinance number sixteen thirty-three, an ordinance of the city of Seal Beach amending the Seal Beach Municipal Code to prohibit the keeping of pigs of any size, kind, or sex. Okay, please vote. That passes four zero.
Okay, there's not a public hearing tonight, and there's no unfinished or continued business tonight. We have a new business item. It's item F, which is the Orange County Fire Authority Adopt Resolution sixty-four nineteen, approving the OCFA Second Amendment to the Joint Power Authority Agreement. The city manager, do we have a presentation?
Yes, mayor, thank you. It's a privilege for me to introduce Assistant Chief of Business Services from the Orange County Fire Authority, Lori Zeller, and my former boss, and also our Division Chief, John Jones, who are both here tonight to make a presentation and address any questions that you might have.
Honorable mayor, and council members, staff, and citizens of Seal Beach, John Jones, Orange County Fire. I'm going to try to present this very complex issue to you tonight. And as my backup, I have Lori Zeller there to answer any really tough questions. But before we jump into this thing, let's go to the first slide. To really understand what we're going to be talking about tonight, you have to understand how we are funded. And the way we are funded in the Orange County Fire Authority is we serve twenty-three cities in the county of Orange. Out of those twenty-three cities, sixteen are structural fire fund cities, and eight are contract service to cities. So we get paid for a contracted service from those eight, and through those sixteen, we get paid- And through those sixteen, we get paid, um, through property tax. Now, we all know that the property tax is a very complex issue. And the way it works in Orange County is we all pay one percent of our assessed property value. Um, and in return for those payments, we all get, um, or receive the same level of service for that one percent. In that ways arise when we try to translate that one percent of property tax dollars either home-to-home, person-to-person, city-to-city, and it just doesn't work that way. Um, it, it's kinda like fairness. If, if, you know, the world's not fair, and, and there is really no equity when it comes to taxes. Um, a perfect example of that is, um, when we look at two neighboring homes in the city of Irvine. As you can see, the base, the home number one, the base year was nineteen seventy, um, five, and assessed value was ninety-nine thousand dollars, which equated to about nine hundred and ninety-two dollars of property tax. An exactly similar home bought in the year two thousand eleven, sold for almost a million dollars, and equates to a property tax of nine thousand nine hundred forty-four dollars a year. So as we see right there, there's two adjoining properties that are paying a different property tax rate, but are getting the same level of service. So what does that mean? It means the Orange County Fire Authority has a long history since our inception of, of studying equity, and how do we make this giant thing we have with different funding sources equitable to all? Uh, most recently, Irvine came to us and said that as the property taxes and their growth has gone through the roof, that they see a disparity in the amount that they're paying for the services that they rent, that were, that we rendered to them. At that same time, they started looking to form their own fire department. They have a study underway right now to see how they could form their own independent fire department. And as you know, we are strong believers in a regional fire protection system, which means that we all band together, we get economies of scales, and we deliver the same service to everybody. Um, which is really difficult when we have these disparities of who's paying, and we all look to the, to try to, um, find this equity balance. In response to that, the board established an equity committee, and we've met numerous times over a year, eighteen months, to try to solve this equity problem for like the third or fourth time now. I wasn't clicking the slides fast enough, I apologize. So what we finally came up with is we, what we think is our best solution to date. And it's a very complex solution. It takes, uh, the payments that we get. It's called the enhanced hybrid model. And basically what we do is we take the structural fire fund cities, which you were not one of, and, um, they contribute more than an average amount of that eleven, of that one percent. We took all the percentages that flow through the structural, um, fire fund, and found the average is eleven point five seven cents, not five six, but five seven cents per dollar. That's the average rate everyone pays. So what we said is anybody who's paying above that eleven point five seven percent is paying too much. And, um, anybody who's paying more than eleven point five seven percent of the one percent will receive an equity payment. The second part of that formula is that we would have a, a cap on the annual growth. And, uh, that cap is at three point five percent of future growth dollars. And any funds above that three point five seven cent percent will trigger more equity payments. Um, and this is only for Irvine. And, and the goal here was to try to commit Irvine to stay with us until the end of the contract, which is twenty thirty. Right now, everyone's locked in until twenty twenty, and they could opt out in twenty twenty. They believe that they can opt out and start their own fire department. Um, which, which isn't good for all of us, because with Irvine in the Orange County Fire Authority, we're just structurally stronger, um, and what it looks like is that, um, if we can keep Irvine in, the payments, we, we will, we will pay out approximately. Let me just jump to another document that I have here, which will give it, give us some better numbers. What we believe in the year twenty thirty, if this plan goes the way it is, that we will refund it to Irvine one hundred and thirty-four million dollars to retain one billion three hundred and seventy-five thousand dollars, one billion three hundred and seventy-five million dollars. Am I correct in that, Lori? So I'm gonna continue on here a little bit. What we've done to make sure that it was sustainable for Orange County Fire Authority, we went through our books backwards and forwards numerous times. And Lori is a genius when it comes to the sustainability of the Orange County Fire Authority. What we've done over the last several years is we pull, held employee raises flat for the last three years, and we don't foresee any, uh, future payments, or future raises to our, our employees. We have a formula called the trigger formula, which would mean we'd have to have certain revenues kick in before we could even trigger a raise for them. And with this plan in effect, we don't see that in the near future at all. So that's how we were able to find the monies to rebate to Irvine. And with their projected growth, we had a company, RSG, um, an independent consultant come in and project property tax with a prep, with the, um, projected property growth. We'll be refunding those monies to them and holding our employees', um, salaries, uh, flat. So what we've done is we've also in, in, and put in place in this plan is a five-year phase-in for all the agencies except Irvine. Um, Irvine, we deemed as a super donor, because it pays so much in excess of everybody else. And, um, the, the thought there was that this, that this proposed solution, uh, in the five-year phase-in would not impact us. We could, we could hold, we could, if we held the first year zero percent for those other cities, there's a, a total of four other cities. And if we held them at zero percent for the first year, twenty-five percent the second year, fifty the third year, and so on, and that had that five-year phase-in, that we can make this work within our own books and not really tax us, because by then the property tax growth would increase like it has been and is projected to, and we could afford the equity payments. All the equity payments will be, uh, unrestricted sources from Orange County Fire Authority revenues. And in the cash contract, this is really important for you. As a con, cash contracts, cities shall not require any additional contributions to the Orange County Fire Authority as a result of these equity payments. You guys already have a contract with us, it can only go up four point five percent. We can't increase that. We're not gonna try to pass through any secret way to try to get anybody else to pay for this. We think we've really well vetted this, this, this proposal, and, um, it will not, and shall not, require any additional payments to the Orange County Fire Authority. So far to date, um, we've had ten cities approve this with the city of Irvine, um, being the first. Are also, Orange County Fire Equity Committee is the one who brought the solution forward, a Budget and Finance Committee, and the Orange County Fire Authority Board of Directors has voted to approve this. Um, I think with the exception of one city, City of Villa Park, they've all passed this with a five oh vote. The city of, uh, Villa Park, uh, voted against it four to one. So the additional requirements for us to get this to move forward would be to have you guys approve, have sixteen of our cities actually approve the Second Amendment. Um, that's two-thirds of our individual members. Um, we are also, to make sure that this thing, um, is well-vetted, we're going to seek court validation, judicial review. And, uh, we're asking any city that would like to join us in that validation, that they can join us in that validation, and make sure that they're a part of really scrutinizing this all the way to the end, so that it somehow doesn't get unwound in the future. And that's pretty much it on the, uh, equity presentation tonight. And I'm here to answer any questions. I also have Chief Zeller that can answer any questions.
Any council members have questions?
Yeah, Chief, is there, what was the reason that Villa Park voted against it? Did they offer any rationale for that, or?
I was not at the meeting, but I can tell you what I've heard from that meeting is that they kinda wanted to send a message that they're a very conservative city. Um, and they had some other stuff, they wanted to write a letter, and then they wanted, they thought that every city would read their letter and understand their positioning. Um, I don't know whether it's that they're opposed to the equity of itself, or if they just wanted to say that they were different than everybody else.
I have a few questions. I, I kinda like to piggyback off on what you just said, though. They're a very conservative city. Uh, we are a very conservative city. Um, what I'm hearing you say is there will be no financial impact to us as a city. So it doesn't matter if we're liberal, or we're conservative, or what we are, if there's no financial impact. So I would still wonder why Villa Park, uh, voted against it. That would be one question that I would have. Um, my other question is, do we pay one percent of our taxes to OCFA?
Currently, uh, Villa Park is a structural fire fund city. And, um, they, I'm speaking of Villa Park right now. They pay, uh, ten point one eight percent, so well below the eleven point five seven percent, or eleven point five seven cents.
Okay, so they're not getting as much back as they want.
They won't get any, they won't get anything back in this equity formula.
And they think they should get something back.
And I don't know if they think they should. I couldn't speak for that. But I, I, maybe Chief Zeller can answer that a little bit better, as to why they, they spoke up against it.
You've actually hit the nail on the head. Um, under the prior equity formula that we have in the joint powers agreement, the city of Villa Park is determined to be an overfunded city. It's a hypothetical formula under the old, um, looked at population and assessed value. And so under that formula, they were determined to be overfunded. Under this new formula that is not hypothetical, it's using real dollars and real property tax pass-through amounts, they are determined to be, uh, underfunded and.
Okay, I understand now, thank you. A question for you, could you please explain, um, is it captain, is that what he said? What is your rank?
Oh, Assistant Chief, Chief, over business.
Okay, Assistant Chief. Could you please explain the difference between a structural city and a, what's the other kind?
Cash contract.
Pardon me?
Cash contract city.
On cash, could you explain that, please?
Sure. Uh, structural fire fund cities have a portion of their one percent property tax directly flow through the county to OCFA through what's called a structural fire fund. Um, these are cities that did not have their own fire department at one point in time. So when Prop thirteen came into play, it structurally froze the distribution of the one percent property tax with a portion of that flowing for fire services. Uh, the remaining cities that are what we call our cash contract cities did have their own fire department at one point in time. There was no portion of that one percent property tax flowing through, uh, for fire services directly to a county provider. So instead, those cities have that portion of their property taxes flowing to their general fund, which they then use to pay through a cash contract to OCFA.
I think that helps explain it a lot. So basically, what you're saying is because we used to have our own fire department, the one percent from our property taxes go into our general fund, and then we contract with you out of our general fund. Okay, and so the others do not. All right, um, okay, I think that does it for me, thank you.
I, I have some questions. Sorry. Wh- wh- how is, uh, OC, OCFA cutting their costs to, to make up this money they're giving to Irvine? Or how are you, how are you handling the additional cost or the, the funds you're providing to Irvine?
I think I spoke to that, I spoke to that point just a little earlier, when I said that we, for the last three years, we've held our employee raises and contracts flat. In fact, we've actually gotten concessions from our employee groups. So our, um, while our revenue is, was, was flat during this recession that we had, it's starting to increase with property taxes increasing and turnover of homes. Uh, every time we see a reseller, you know, property values change, and then the pass-through for the structural fire fund cities comes in greater. Um, and that, my concern is it sounds like you're putting the burden on employees. And that's maybe good for a couple of years, but not for twenty years.
In our forecast projections, where we tried to assess the feasibility of this, um, we definitely had pay raises kicking at a certain point about fiscal two thousand eighteen right now under the current projection, subject to change with upcoming contract negotiations. But our employee groups did speak in support of this proposal, balancing the long-term stability of the organization, understanding the impact potentially to them if we were to lose a big participant like the city of Irvine.
But if you apply this formula to all your members that aren't contract members, would you fund, be better funded, be more equal equity between all cities?
If we.
If you, if you, some of these must be underfunded, some people are getting more benefits than they're paying for. If everybody were paying by the same formula you're applying to, to Irvine, would you have sufficient funds?
If all of our cities had appreciation and growth at the same level of, of Irvine, we would have a much higher level of funding, but, but we're able to make it work with.
When I look at your formula, it looks like the growth in Irvine will be covered by your formula. So you'll always have enough, as they grow, because they have a lot of room to grow, they, you'll have adequate funds from them to provide the service. Now, I also thought maybe I heard that you're gonna, Seal Beach can consider that we're gonna get a four percent, four point five percent raise every year thereafter? I don't know what triggers our four and a half percent.
That's the maximum exposure you have.
What, what triggers the four and a half percent?
It's whatever the underlying growth is in our operating budget. So if we have, for example, increases in retirement costs, um, that would be part of the cost percentage increase to your contract charge. Um, so for the next, uh, next two years, actually, we are expecting some increases in retirement costs, almost purely driven by that one line item in our budget. Um, beyond that, the projected increases for our contract charges are under two percent.
Okay, so it won't be an automatic four and a half percent.
No, no.
That's a maximum.
And what, what, there are five other cities that are included in this, and when you take their money into account, yeah, I think you said one point three four million you're refunding to Irvine over thirty years or twenty years. What is the total for all the cities that you're making refund?
One hundred and eighty-four million. Irvine has the, the.
And so what, there was something about in-kind services, was that related to those entities, or?
Some of those cities which will, um, are part of the phase-in process, if they wanted to use in-kind services in lieu of that phase-in, that they could do that. So cities like Rancho Santa Margarita, which has a, a fairly open area toward the front country there, they could use our dozers and our hand crews, stuff that we're already, we already paying costs for, that we could pass through to them in, in in-kind service instead of money.
Okay, thank you.
Mr. Mayor, I just had one other question.
Okay, please.
The, uh, it's my understanding that, uh, that you can't refund this on the property tax, is that correct?
Sure.
And, and the funds come from other, other sources?
Right, other sources of our revenue that are considered unrestricted. So property taxes represent about sixty-four percent of our revenue. The remaining thirty-six percent are unrestricted, and we can use those for paying these equity payments.
Thank you.
Okay, thank you. Is there a motion to approve, uh, Resolution sixty-four nineteen? Some moved. Please vote. That passes four zero.
Okay, there, there, there will not be a council meeting on, uh, November eleventh, that's, uh, Veterans Day. The, the next council meeting will be on November twelfth. So with no objections, the city council meeting is adjourned to Tuesday, November twelfth, two thousand thirteen, at five thirty P P M, to meet and close session if being necessary. Good night.